Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call our meeting to order. This is the City Council meeting Tuesday, June 21st, 2020. And Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Here.
Turk?
Here.
Hertzberg?
Here.
Harvey?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Whitaker?
Here.
Scroggen.
Everyone, would you please mute your phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the unity of us all.
Okay, I don't believe we have any presentations tonight, do we? Okay, I didn't think so. So the first order of business is we will cover our nominating committee report. And this is for the nominating committee meetings of June 15th and 16th, 2022. Present were myself, Sarah Bunch, Mark Kenyon, Sonya Harvey, and Teresa Turk. The mayor recommends the following candidates for appointment. Fayetteville Public Library Board of Trustees Brett Park, one term ending 4/1/23. And the nominating committee supports that recommendation. The nominating committee recommends the following candidates for appointment. Animal Services Advisory Board, we have one vacant business representative term ending 6/30/25. One vacant licensed veterinarian term ending 6/30/25. And the nominating committee recommends Jennifer Cole as one citizen at large term ending 6/30/25. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we also have one vacant term ending 3/31/27 on that board. And the nominating committee recommends Richard Roberts for one unexpired term ending 3/31/27. Environmental Action Committee, Sarah Grace, one resident at large term ending 6/30/25. Fayetteville Arts Council, Chloe Bell, one arts and culture citizen at large term ending 6/30/25. Laura Hightower, one arts and culture citizen at large term ending 6/30/25. Robert Stafford, one working artist term ending 6/30/25. Abby Hollis, one working artist term ending, term ending 6/30/25. Emily Miller, one unexpired working artist term ending 6/30/24. Fayetteville Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Jonathan Wood, one unexpired term ending 12/28/22. Christina Cole, one unexpired term ending 12/28/26. Historic District Commission, we have two vacant terms ending 6/30/25. Peg Advisory Board, we have one vacant term ending 6/30/26. And we, as the nominating committee, recommend Gil- Gildner for one unexpired term ending 6/30/23. Public Facilities Board, we still have one vacancy there, ending 12/30/22. The Walton Arts Council, Walton Arts Center Council Incorporated, we recommend Shabana Cowser, one term ending 6/30/25. Justin Tenet, one term ending 6/30/25. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the nominating-
Vice Mayor, I have one comment. I thought that we recommended Gil- Gildner for the one term ending 6/30/26.
I think we did, actually. Do you remember that? We, I think we recommended him for the longer term.
We did.
That's probably my error. I probably wrote it down wrong. What, can we just make a correction here?
You could just correct your motion.
Thank you, Teresa. I want to correct my motion and I recommend Gil- Gildner for the vacant term in, on the Peg Advisory Board ending 6/30/26.
I move we accept the slate as published.
Second.
Again.
Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. So I believe the next item we have is the monthly financial report from Paul Becker.
Good evening. This will be the my, the financial report in the month of April, so this is month four in the fiscal year. I wasn't at the last meeting and I normally give it the first of the month, so I'll give it to you now. Sales tax, we know our city one penny was just a little soft, however, we're doing very well so far for the month. Month budget, we're up 17% for the county, we're up 6% in total for the city one penny. Or the average of roughly 12% in sales tax loans. So sales tax is doing pretty well. Franchise fees, franchise fees were up about 8%, so that's doing well. Beverage taxes, beverage license, they're up compared to, compared to budget as our building permits. State turnback is also up so far this year. Fees, especially for parks, are up compared to last year. Soft parts are courts, courts fees and fines are down. Interest on investments is still down. Remember, we're looking at April and there was some certainly decline early this year in investments, but all in all, we're up roughly 10% compared to the revenue budget for this point in time for the general fund. So we're doing very well thus far. When I look at the street fund, revenue is up 18%. It's doing very well. Again, that's primarily because of the sales tax associated and allocated half percent for roads. Also doing very well for the wholesale sales tax of gasoline and the motor fuel tax turnback for the state. So we're up about 18%, which is very, very good at this point in time. And street fund, parking funds, parking funds were roughly 30, 30% over what I had anticipated with this year substantially. We're doing much better than compared to last year. As you remember, last year at this point in time, we had issues with coronavirus and, and parking, especially if the entertainment system was now, but that's starting to pick up pretty well so far this year. Hopefully, it will continue. Park developments were up 13%. Again, that's HMR taxes, hotel motel restaurant taxes, and that's doing pretty well so far compared to last year. Water and sewer fund were up. In water, our revenue billings are up 1% and in sewer, they are up 6%, which normally the allocation are pretty close, but this year, these sewer billings are up over what I estimated more than water. Water's up about 1%, which I normally anticipate being up around 2% or so at this point in time. Trash and recycling, fees are down a little bit. They're down 4%. Again, we're a little soft on some of the commercial aspects and remember for a while, our transfer station was closed. And so that affected part of it, but some of the commercials still isn't back to where it was at one point in time for poll charges and things of that nature, but they appear to be picking up as, as we go forward. So I don't have a major concern there. Airport fuel is up 50% so far compared to, compared to what I had anticipated. Remember last year, it was, it was soft, picked up later in the year. So far, it's doing well this year. So all in all, on a revenue basis, we're doing very well. We need to keep in mind, a lot of that's inflationary driven. We'll see how we go, but I'm very happy with where we are at this point in time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does any member of the council have any questions for Paul?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Paul, I know that when we've talked about this in the past, there were some delinquent water bills and sewer bills due to COVID. Have those been reclaimed or paid off, or how is that coming along?
Well, we're working with the customers as much as possible. We have, we have gotten some money from the state help. State are helping some of the water and sewer customers. We're working very hard with them. I think we've recovered about $30,000 in past due bills for those who are really behind. We're working with our customers to get, to, to work out the payment programs, working payments with them. So we're coming along on that. We still have, we still have outstanding bad debt higher than we normally do, but we're working that down and we're working with the customers to work out payment plans.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, our next items are the consent agenda. We have the approval of the June 7th, 2022 City Council minutes. Number two is a resolution to amend the master street plan by adopting residential linked trailhead parking as a street section and by designating the portion of South Smokehouse Trail between West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and South Houdal Lane as a residential linked trailhead parking. Three, a resolution to approve an amendment to the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with McClellan Consulting Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $151,500 for the full design of Phase 1 of the North Street corridor project and to approve a budget adjustment, 2019 Transportation Bond Project. Four, a resolution to authorize a contract with Planet Geo Incorporated pursuant to RFP 22-01, excuse me, selection number one, for the development of a 10-year urban forestry plan in the amount of $73,550 and to approve a project contingency in the amount of $4,000. Five, a resolution to amend Resolution 96, a resolution to amend Resolution 96-22 and authorize the purchase of a Freightliner recycling truck through Doggett Freightliner of Springdale for the total, for a new total amount of $206,825. Six, a resolution to approve Policies AOP-121, Daily Staffing AOP-127, Special Operations Section, and AOP 403, Fire Education Dogs as part of the Fayetteville Fire Department Administrative Operating Procedures. Seven, a resolution to increase the Airport Services Staffing count by point zero, excuse me, by point four zero, FTE for Flight Line Operations Technicians, Technician, and to approve a budget adjustment. Eight, a resolution to approve a conduit occupancy and fiber swap agreement with OzarkSCO LLC to allow OzarkSCO to utilize the city's fiber optic, optic, fiber, excuse me, fiber conduit to install fiber optic cable in exchange for providing 10 dedicated fiber optic strands for city use. Nine, a resolution pursuant to Section 166.04B3 of the Fayetteville Unified Development Code to approve the request to not dedicate additional right-of-way along North Street for a lot split associated with the fire station number 10 project. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey? Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen. Scroggen.
And it passes.
Now, on unfinished business, before reading this, I would like to recognize Kit to address our first item of unfinished business.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. At this point, I think that, you remember the last meeting, you asked me to have an ordinance that would allow the City Council more discretion, more authority to handle a damage claim where had been capped at 40,000 to make it capped at 50,000. And so I drafted that ordinance for you and it's now on new business. But since the next item would be the claim of Patricia Nepp that would need this higher cap, I would ask that you suspend the rules and place that, that ordinance to increase your authority to be heard right now on the agenda.
I would move to do that.
Thank you.
Right now, yeah.
Okay, so we have, Kara, did you get the second on that? Okay, so we have a motion and a second on to add this. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
Now, Kit, do I read this part or do you read it?
You, you should probably read the title and I'll read the body.
Okay, all right, thank you. A resolution pursuant-
No, this is the ordinance.
Where is it?
It's the last item on new business.
Get back over here. Sorry. Okay. An ordinance to amend Section 39.10 Water, Water and Wastewater Damage Claims and 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims of the Fayetteville Code to increase the allowed compensation amount by 25% because of a decade of inflation and to approve an emergency clause. Kit?
Whereas on June 5th, 2012, the City Council passed Ordinance Number 5938 to enact Sections 39.10 and 39.11 of the Fayetteville Code to authorize limited payments of eligible compensation by city staff for smaller claims and only with mayoral and city council approval for larger claims, but no higher than the designated maximum amounts. And whereas there has been a substantial increase in the cost to our citizens of these largely property damage losses during the last decade, such that it is appropriate to increase all previous levels of allowed compensation by 25%. Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Fayetteville Code, Section 39.10 C4 and Section 39.11 C4 to increase all compensation authorized limits by 25% by repealing the former subsections and enacting the amended Section 39.10 C4 and Section 39.11 C4 as follows. Section 39.10 C4, the Utilities Direct Department Director may not authorize any payment greater than $10,000 for any claim pursuant to this section. The mayor may request the City Council to authorize an amount greater than 10% by resolution, but in no case shall the city pay more than $25,000 pursuant to these claims procedure for a damage claim related to water or wastewater utility infrastructure occurrence, unless in an extraordinary case, the mayor recommends and the City Council by two-thirds majority approves an exemption from the $25,000 damage cap and approves a payment of up to $50,000. Quote, 39.11 C4, the chief of staff may not authorize any payment greater than $10,000 for any claim pursuant to this section. The mayor may request and the City Council to authorize an amount greater than 10,000 by resolution, but in no case shall the city pay more than $25,000 pursuant to the claims procedure for a damage claim, unless in an extraordinary case, the mayor recommends and the City Council by two-thirds majority approves an exemption from this $25,000 damage cap and approves a payment of up to $50,000. And Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 39.11 D1 by repealing and deleting the second sentence of that subsection. And Section 3, the City Council of the City of Fayetteville hereby determines that this ordinance should become effective without delay because of the City Council's need to address significant pending and potential claims related to the September 20th, 2021 water main rupture that caused unprecedented and substantial damage to the foundations and structures of nearby residence home so that this change is necessary for the public peace, health, and safety of Fayetteville residents. Therefore, the City Council hereby declares that emergency exists such that this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval. And of course, I did draft this because you asked me to do that and I think it's also the right thing to do and, and you heard the claim that we'd had before, so I think there's a need for that. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for Kit on this item? Okay, so what?
We have public comment.
Public comment, okay. It was like I lost my ear. So do we have any members of the public that would like to address this item? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to discuss this? Is the applicant here?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. All right. I'll close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the council. Any members of the council have anything they'd like to add to this?
I would just like to say, thank you, Kit, so much for working on this for our citizens. This, this means a lot to the family and to Fayetteville as well, so thank you.
You're quite welcome. And this is an ordinance, and so it has to be read three times.
Okay.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
Okay, Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
Okay, it does pass. An ordinance to amend Section 39.10 Water and Wastewater Damage Claims and Section 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims of the Fayetteville Code to increase the allowed compensation amounts by 25% because of a decade of inflation and to approve an emergency clause.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Kara, we have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
That passes. An ordinance to amend Section 39.10 Water and Wastewater Damage Claims and Section 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims of the Fayetteville Code to increase the allowed compensation amounts by 25% because of a decade of inflation and to approve an emergency clause.
Okay, I'm sorry, I lost count of which, how many readings we'd had here. So we have one more, right?
No, that's the third and final reading.
Third and final reading, so we're done with that. Okay, good. All righty. Now, Kit, so I read now, this is the, pardon me?
Did you all vote on that last?
Oh, no.
No, no, we just, we eventually have to call the roll once there's no more comments from the council.
Sorry about that. I was like, is that the last one? So Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
And we need a vote on the emergency clause also. So I need a motion to pass the emergency clause.
I move we pass the emergency-
I make a motion that we pass the emergency clause.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Kara, would you, we take one vote on this, this, right? Okay, so would you please call the roll, Kara?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that passed too. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now on to, when we go back to unfinished business, I read this-
First item of new business.
New business is the updated version, okay. Okay, so our first item of unfinished business.
I'm, I'm, you're right, unfinished, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is a resolution to, pursuant to 39.10 C4 of the Fayetteville City Code to authorize the mayor to pay up to the total amount of $48,707.67 to Patricia Nepp for water damage overflow damage remediation at 3252 North McKed Court.
Okay, now that is actually the proposed amended resolution I gave you. So we need to amend, motion to amend to that ordinance, that resolution.
Do I need to read the regu, the first one and then we amend it or to this one or?
You can, if you want to, just go straight to making a motion to amend to the resolution that I passed out to you all tonight.
Okay, that I just read.
By the Vice Mayor.
Sorry.
I move we amend to this new resolution.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend to the resolution to the one that I just read. Motion and a second. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey? Harvey? Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Scroggen.
So at this point, you have the amended resolution before the council.
Okay. So I guess that you-
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. As you recall, this is about the largest 36-inch diameter water main break on North McKed Court. On September 20th of last year, Patricia Nepp owns the home located 3252 North McKed Court. This large water main break caused substantial amounts of flooding and damage to their residents. Total reimbursement from this point forward to Patricia Nepp is requesting $40,707.67. As you recall, she's already been reimbursed $8,000. This item was held in order for the council to consider an inflation adjustment increase of 25% to City Code 39-10, which you just passed. And staff does request approval to reimburse Patricia Nepp for the remaining amount. Do you have any answering questions?
Do we have, does anyone have any questions for 10? Okay. So now I would, public comment, yeah. Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item either on Zoom or in the council chambers?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Anyone in the council? Applicant present? Seeing none, I'll close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the council members. What would you like to do with this?
I move we pass the resolution.
Do we want to hear from the applicant first? Is applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Cindy Cottle, 3421 North Buckingham Drive in Fayetteville. I'm here representing my parents, the homeowners at 3252 McKed Court. That's Jim and Pat Nepp. I think last council session, we kind of hashed through all of this. I do appreciate you taking the time to consider their position and Attorney Williams for redrafting that code. And again, I'll answer any questions if anybody has anything, but I hope that I did an adequate job in sharing with you their position at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call you back if we have any questions. Do we have any questions for the applicant or any member of staff on this item? Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment. So-
I move we pass the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to pass the resolution. Motion and a second to pass the resolution. Does this get three readings too?
It does not. It requires a two-thirds majority, which means it requires six votes in favor.
Okay, all right. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
So that passed.
Okay, thank you. All right. Boy, that was, that was convoluted there. Sorry about that. Okay, so the next item is of unfinished business. Not sure I've got the right page here. Next item of unfinished business is an ordinance to amend Section 159.01 Fees Schedule of the Unified Development Code to adopt increased variance request fees, eliminate an obsolete accessory dwelling unit fee, and create fees for services that are currently provided without any cost recovery. Jonathan Kurth, you have that item?
I do, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Well, before that- Well, before that, why don't we suspend the rules and get to the second reading?
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
All these technicalities, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, that's why I was like. All right, we'll go to the second reading. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
Okay, an ordinance to amend section one fifty-nine oh one fees schedule of the Unified Development Code to adopt increased variance request fees, eliminate an obsolete accessory dwelling unit fee, and create fees for services that are currently provided without any cost recovery.
And I'll jump in here, Vice Mayor, Jonathan Kurth with the Development Services Department. I know I covered this at length at the agenda session and then I glossed over the proposal at the last council meeting given the late hour. So I wanted to give a little bit more fleshed out version of a presentation tonight, given this is the public hearing for the item, it felt appropriate. I'm here representing both the Public Works Department and the Development Services Department with basically a five-part proposal to amend our development fees. The, the main purpose of it, as, as Mr. Williams outlined, is to update some existing fees, including eliminating one and establish new fees for some services that are currently done for free effectively. As far as the services go that are currently offered without a fee, there's three that are being proposed to have a fee included. One is a zoning verification letter. This is a common document with real estate transactions, but it does take, can take up to a couple hours of staff time and we get dozens of these requests every year, so we wanted to make sure to account for that time. The second and perhaps more substantial fee proposal is regarding grading permits. Currently, there's a single grading permit fee, after which a grading, or for the review of the permit, after which a permit is issued. If changes are made to that plan afterwards, there's no fee charged for the staff time required to review it and make sure everything still meets code. So staff proposes a tiered fee ranging from seventy-five to two hundred dollars based on the size of the project. The second element of the new fees in the grading permit bucket are regarding re-inspections. Currently, there are no re-inspections when our public works inspectors go to properties or there are no re-inspection fees when our public works inspectors go to properties and the, the, the item they're being asked to inspect is not ready. We would like to incorporate a fee that varies based on how many times they have to go out there for the same inspection. This would mirror what our building safety department does now and helps account for those, the, the times when an inspector's inspection is requested, but they may not be prepared for it. There's no disincentive now to actually cause, call and cancel that inspection. That tends to stretch our inspectors' time very thin and can reduce our, their availability to respond to concerns from residents about drainage concerns and things of that nature. The last piece of the proposed fee with regards to grading permits is a doubling of fees whenever work is begun without a grading permit, so it's a punitive fee, if you will. The last set of fees regard, that do not exist today or in relation to street closures, entry rail closures and downtown sidewalk closures. Currently, there's no fee whatsoever. You can request to close any city street for any amount of time and there's no fee associated with that, whether it's a fee for staff's review or whether it's a fee for the impact of actually closing that street. That has the result of some projects will estimate an amount of time and then they'll just keep at rolling closures and there's no, nothing to discourage them from doing that, nothing to encourage them from working more quickly. What that looks like is a fifty dollar review because there are multiple staff involved and then non-municipal staff involved in reviewing those requests, whether it's O R T or Razorback Transit externally in groups like planning and engineering internally. As far as the use fee goes, that's also tiered similar to some other fees we're proposing. At the low end, on like a residential street or a sidewalk or downtown sidewalk, it'd be twenty-five dollars per day or twenty-five dollars per lane, up to a hundred and fifty dollars a day per lane if you're wanting to close a much more substantial street in the city, like College Avenue, for example. As far as the other two changes being proposed, the updates, these are not new fees, these are existing fees. We have an accessory dwelling unit zoning review fee. We're proposing to remove that with recent changes to our A D U ordinance. There's no longer a, a, a filtering review that the planning group does. They can do all their reviews as a part of their building permit. And the other proposed fee changes for variance requests, it's currently twenty-five dollars to request to, to not meet or comply with our Unified Development Code. But it's a very paltry sum compared to the amount of work that often goes into variance requests. A variance request can take anywhere from our research, from two hours of staff time to twelve hours of staff time. It varies very widely depending on whether it touches on multiple divisions and departments and just based on the, the, the degree to which the, the item touches on different groups. And that would be increased from twenty-five dollars to one hundred and it would also have a, 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 a further fee if you were requesting the variance in response to a violation. So it's a hundred dollars if you ask for it upfront, it'd be two hundred dollars if you commit the violation and you're filing a variance request in response to that. There were two changes that staff made following the planning commission meeting that we, in evaluating these proposals, and that, that's what I just described to you, but I wanted to make sure you knew what the planning commission saw first. One was to add the word impacted to when lanes are being closed. There was concern that a future engineer or planner could look at it and interpret the fee be for, if you're closing one lane, you got to pay for all the lanes, if that makes sense. So we wanted to say the fee is applied based on the number of impacted lanes being closed. The second piece was the grading permit reinspection fees, having the proposal to have that double each time from twenty-five to fifty to one hundred to two hundred, as opposed to what the planning commission initially saw, which was a two hundred dollar fee right off the bat. We wanted to accommodate instances where there wasn't any sort of malevolence in asking for our inspection without being prepared. And that would also mirror what our building safety ordinances and fees require. We did tell the planning commission what changes we had made. That was brought before them two meetings ago and shared with them. They had no concerns with this. They had originally forwarded this to the city council in February and we were just deliberating internally in the meantime to make sure we were a, a, a partisan of all these changes and also sharing it with the development community. And as I shared with you all last meeting, and it's the same to date, we've only received one piece of comment from the developers that we shared this with and that they felt this was reasonable and these fees were just very nominal in nature. So this would be the third hearing that this item has had and also was advertised in public newspapers. And I'm happy to take any questions you all have. Thank you.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Jonathan? Okay, so I need to do public comment now, is that correct?
Okay.
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay. Is there any member of the public present that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. This would be the third reading? Yeah, if you go, if you suspend the rules, this should be the third reading.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section one fifty-nine oh one fees schedule of the Unified Development Code to adopt increased variance request fees, eliminate an obsolete accessory dwelling unit fee, and create fees for services that are currently provided without any cost recovery.
Okay. All right then.
Madam Vice Mayor, I, I would just want to comment my support for this and my appreciation to staff for doing the work and recommendations to bring before us. I've got longstanding concerns about any service for which fees don't cover the cost of delivering that service means that that customer's being subsidized by other individuals. And so I view it as immeasurably fair that if I'm the one receiving or requiring the services, that I would pay for those services. So I commend staff for bringing this forward and I, I personally look forward to other opportunities for additional fees where inadvertently someone is being subsidized by others, that we would review those and perhaps be able to address those later this year. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to make one comment, sorry.
Okay.
Jonathan, thank you for bringing this back and for giving us a very nice presentation for the second time. And I hope that everyone who may have missed the last meeting because it was late was able to make this one, so thank you so much.
Sarah Cady had one small comment. Jonathan, you might have missed, you did miss. Jesse was here last time and Councilmember Scroggen wanted the public to be clear that these fees for temporary road closures had nothing to do with event permitting.
Yes, that's correct. Most masters did share that with me. I can touch on that if you didn't. Were unable to attend the agenda session, there was a question, I think specifically about parades, which was of course time appropriate, given the large parade Fayetteville had this last weekend. These are considered for developments. These fees are meant for projects. It's not meant for Federal Express and UPS to have to pay for a road closure when they make the delivery, things of those nature. Parades have a separate permitting process. This is when a project has a, an associated development or building permit or, or things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. And that's the last, we're done with this item now, I think. Now we've got one more, right? One more vote. Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, so we have our final vote on this, Kara?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, our next item is a public hearing, but we're going to read the item correctly?
Well, basically, the public comment that would normally go in just a public hearing will be following the reading of the ordinance in new business, but there'll still be public comment just last if it was a public hearing because we always allow public comment for every ordinance in new business, so it just makes it more, we don't need to have the official legal public hearing until you all schedule that and it'll have to be scheduled for another meeting.
Okay, so our first item of new business, you want me to read it and then?
Yeah, just read the title of that.
You would like to have it possibly tabled to let more?
But after public comment.
After public comment, okay. This is our first item of new business. It is an ordinance to amend section fifty-one one thirty-six monthly water rates and fifty-one and section fifty-one point one thirty-seven monthly sewer rates to change water and sewer rates as recommended by the cost of service study conducted by Black and Beach.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville's current water and sewer rates were adopted in two thousand and eight based on a cost of service study conducted by H D R Engineering. And whereas on August eighteenth, twenty twenty, the city council approved resolution two twelve dash twenty authorizing a contract with Black and Beach for an updated cost of service study. And whereas the Black and Beach Cost of Service Study recommends initial changes involved the water and sewer rates that reflect the true cost of service by customer class and a three percent annual increase in rates each year thereafter until a new study is conducted. And whereas the city council has determined after public hearing required by Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash twenty-three dash two-two-three, that the proposed rate change reflecting the true cost of service should be adopted and that the new rates shall take effect on January first of twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section fifty-one point one three-six monthly water rates and enact a new subsection fifty-one point one three-six as shown in exhibit A attached to this ordinance. Section two, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section fifty-one point one three-seven monthly sewer rates and enact a new section fifty-one point one three-seven as shown in exhibit B attached to this ordinance.
Okay.
Good evening, I'll speak to this. One of the questions you may ask is why are we coming forward with a rate study at this point in time? First off, it's been fourteen years since the last rate study. We held off on a rate study because we were having permitting issues and we weren't sure what permitting issues were going to be with EPA. So we held off on that because it could have required substantial capital improvements, both to the east side sewer plant and the west side sewer plant. So we haven't conducted a study in fourteen years, so it's, this has an age issue too. The statutes have changed twenty twenty-one in chapter fourteen, two thirty-four. It requires for all, all municipalities to have a rate study within five years or they are judged in financial distress. So there was statutory study which helped promote this. Three, C I P has, we have many issues in C I P to, current rates just can't support what we need to do for capital improvements at this point in time. So we brought the study forward. The other thing is it's a cost of services study. A cost of services looks at customer class. Customer class changes by the volume used by that customer class over points in time. Therefore, you need to adjust the study for customer classes to make sure you're allocating those costs to the correct customer class. I'm going to introduce Anna White from Black and Beach who conducted the rate study. Ask her to discuss the rate study with the, with the council. And then if I may, I'll come back, make a couple of final comments on what this would look like for the customer. And then again, we'll set a time for an actual public hearing and to take this up again at this point in time. So Anna, would you care to address the council on your study?
All right. Thank you, Paul. Can everyone hear me and, and see the, the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to join you tonight to talk about the results of the water and sewer rate study that we conducted for the city. Okay, there we go. So this was a comprehensive cost of service study and accomplished these four objectives. So first, we projected the operating and the capital needs for both utilities for water and sewer. We identified the revenue from rates necessary to recover those costs over the five-year study period. As has been mentioned, the study indicated that a three percent rate increase is necessary for both utilities in order to maintain the minimum fund balances, the fund requirements and all of the funds for both utilities fully fund the operating and capital costs. So we then performed the cost of service analysis. And this is where we allocate those operating and capital costs to the various customer classes in order to determine their share of the costs. We then designed the proposed rate schedules to generate the appropriate amount of, of revenue necessary, again, to fund all of the costs. As we went through this process, we engaged and educated the, the city and utility staff. We met with the Water and Sewer Committee several times and now we're engaging with the city council. So there are two guidance manuals that provide the industry accepted rate setting approaches. The study methodology that was used for this study reflected the approaches, those approaches provided in those two manuals as well as, as these rate setting best practices. So again, we define the performance standards in terms of the required fund balances and metrics that each utility needs to meet. We developed a financial plan that would ensure that each utility would meet those metrics. We performed a cost of service study in order to determine how much revenue should be recovered from each customer class. And then we established the rate schedule so that each utility is self-sufficient and will recover and will meet the, the indicated financial metrics. So we shared the results of the financial analysis and the cost of service analysis with the city team and with the Water and Sewer Committee. And the details to both of those steps are included in the rate report that the city has. So we're going to move straight to discussing the rate structure. So these are some practical considerations that we take into account when we design the proposed rate schedule and the rate structure. So in, in addition to reflecting just the costs of the cost of service analysis, we also want to consider some of the items that are listed here. And we're going to touch on several of these items as we walk through the proposed rate schedules. So when we reviewed the existing water and sewer rate structure, there were three components that we evaluated. The first was the existing rate structure assumes a minimum usage of one thousand gallons. So we recommended that this component be eliminated so that the minimum water unit is a hundred gallons. So this addressed. water unit is 100 gallons. So this addresses equitable cost recovery. If a customer is using 500 gallons, they're going to be charged for 500 gallons and not 1,000 gallons. It also sends appropriate price signals. The customer will see on the bill that what they're being charged reflects the amount of water actually used. And then finally, it's easy to understand, again, because the customer bill reflects the amount of water used. The second component is the fixed monthly service charges. So these have been aligned to, adjusted to align with cost of service. So meaning that the costs required to read a meter, to issue the bill, to collect that payment, to maintain and service the meter are recovered through the fixed service charge. This addresses, again, equitable cost recovery. Customers are paying for the service that they receive each month associated with their meter and their service, service line. It also helps promote revenue stability. The service charge, it's a fixed amount. It can be predicted from month to month. So regardless of how much water customers are using, the utilities know that they can at least rely on the revenue from that monthly fixed service charge. We also then reviewed the volume rate structure and we made changes to this and we're going to address those in the next slide. What you'll see when we talk through these is that the changes that we made are also related to promoting equitable cost recovery, sending the right appropriate price signal and making the rates more easy to understand. So we evaluated three different rate structures with slightly different changes to each of the rate components. So for each of the rate components, the minimum charge, the fixed charge and the volume charge, these were the options that we evaluated and then recommended for consideration. So the first was removing that minimum requirement. Talked about why we recommend that that be removed. And that is, that is, you'll see that in all three of the options that we look at. The second one with regards to the fixed service charges, we looked at adjusting the existing rates to the, either the maximum of the 2022 existing rates or cost of service. So essentially, if cost of service is indicating that there's a decrease in the rates, we held those rates at the existing, at the existing, existing charge. The other option that we considered with regard to the fixed service charges was moving to the midpoint or the average between existing and cost of service. So the increases in the service charge are not as significant under the second option here as they are under the first option. And then the third with regards to the volume rate structure, any rate structure that had a declining block, meaning that, for example, the first 300,000 gallons of water is $5 for 1,000 gallons, and anything over 300,000 is $2,000 gallons. That's a declining block. So we moved that to one unit rate per 1,000 gallons. And you'll see that when we look at the rate schedules. So this is a summary of those three options. So option one, as I mentioned, so with regard to the service charge, we looked at the max of the existing rates and cost of service. This applies to all customer classes. For the usage rate, the volume charge, we eliminated the minimum volume. We maintained the existing volume tiers for all customer classes except for irrigation. For irrigation, we changed it from a declining block to a uniform. The second option, then, we still have the same service charge and usage rate in terms of eliminating the minimum as option one, but we went ahead and also changed the non-residential declining block to a uniform rate. So at this point, there's no declining blocks. The third option, then, the only change from option two was to move to the service charge to, to the average of the 2022 existing rates and cost of service. On the sewer side, it's very similar. The service charge in option one was the max usage charge, usage rate, there was no change. For option two, the only change there was moving all of the rates that had a declining block and changing them to a uniform rate. And then for option three, the only change there from option two was making that slight adjustment in the service charge to be midway between existing and cost of service. So the rate structure that we are showing, the proposed rate structure that we're showing is option two for both water and sewer. So this reflects the maximum of the existing and cost of service fixed charge. And if you can see here, it results in some increases for outside city customers between about the one inch and the three inch meter size. For all other customer classes, there's no change in the fixed fee. You'll also see here for the volume charge, non-residential, irrigation and wholesale have been moved from a declining block, as you can see here, to a uniform rate. So for example, for the non-residential, instead of the rates going from 379 and down to 339 based on the water usage, it's a uniform rate of 393. And so this changes that we made here for inside city also apply as well to outside city and the wholesale customers. Then we have the same thing for sewer. Again, this is option two. As you can see here, the max of the existing and the cost of service fixed charge results in some increases again for outside city customers around the one and a half inch to the three inch range as well as for the city of Farmington. And again, you can see for the residential customers and the wholesale customers, under these proposed rates, we have we have eliminated I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I, I need to double check this. I believe for the, for the inside city, this moved to a, a uniform rate. I'll double check that. But you can see that we did the same for outside city Farmington as well as the wholesale. I think this might just be a typo on this slide. I apologize for that. So included in the rate report are typical bill tables for water and sewer individually and then for combined. So it compares typical bills under various meter sizes and water usage and wastewater volume under both the existing and the proposed rates. You can get an idea of the impact that these proposed rate structures would have on your customers. All right, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Do council members have any questions for Ann or Paul about this item? Okay.
I'd like to make a few closing comments if I may.
All right.
Kevin, you want to put up? I'll just have a couple of slides. I'll be very brief. Want to talk about a little bit, what does its impact mean to the customer? First off, our recommendations are to implement the cost of service rates for water and sewer based on the study for 2023. And we're recommending that they're be implemented in 2023 to allow the customers a chance to get ready for the impact of these because some of the changes are significant. We also, we also are requesting that a 3% annual increase in the fees be implemented through 2026. And that's because if we keep the rates separate, we would have to have a larger cost implemented in the first year. So this is allowing it to, to more or less increase over time. So the impact isn't as large in a first, in a first increment. We're charging, we're talking about implementing the base charges, the proposed base charges derived on based to cost of service if the cost of service per first is greater than the existing base charge. So we've kept the base charge the same for the, for the customers and for the meter sizes that did not change. And that's to help the impact in total. We eliminated the 1,000 gallon of charge. The minimum charge was 1,000 gallon. The committee was very, very, very set on this. They felt that it was appropriate for the customer to pay what in fact they used. We also continued the existing tier block for customer classes that have an inclining block. What is an inclining block? That means if you use so much, so many gallon and you go over that into a very large amount, you can increase the cost per gallon for that amount over the certain rate, or you could have a decline by reducing that. We felt that over a certain amount used, we should increase that particular block, therefore encouraging water conservation wherever possible. We continued with the existing block structure for customer classes that have an inclining block. So residential, if you overuse a certain amount, then your cost per gallon over that amount is going to increase and that is staying the same. Change the uniform block customers for customers that had a declining block. That meant if you used over a certain amount, the cost per gallon would decrease. We felt that that cost should stay the same for irrigation and non-residential. And you should not, if you use more water, should not decrease the rate over a certain amount. So those are basically the recommendations coming forward. Again, as we talked about, some of these, some of these changes are significant. Kevin, do you want to hit the next slide? First off, we look at the water changes and we can see that the water changes, we changed many of them. It affects most of the outside the city customers. One of the things that happens when you don't have a rate study for a long time and you have a cost service study for customer classes, the amount of water used by each customer class goes back to configure what their cost service should be. Since we hadn't had a study in 14 years, that changed drastically. That's why you're seeing certain classes change much larger than others. And you'll see in the wholesale water especially, it has increased. The place we're going to see the major charge change, and if you go up to the water sewer rate structures and the sewer water rate structure, this is from a number of reasons. Number one, the west side plant had not been fully placed in service when we did the last cost study. So the full cost had not been incorporated in the study at that time. Also, all of the operating costs were estimates at that point of time and that changes over time. Major impacts, so you're going to see a bigger impact on sewer than you are on water because of the coming onboard of the west side plant. You're going to see, for example, Farmington changes more than the other ones. That's because the Farmington contract over 8% of that plant contractually is absorbed by Farmington when we, when we built the west side plant. So some, those are some of the major changes we've seen. I wanted you to see the impact of this. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions or public comment.
I have a question for Paul. Do we have an estimated increase for an average residential customer?
Or I'm sorry, which one?
Do we have an estimated increase for like just a residential customer? Any ballpark quotes?
For the average, I do not have one at this point in time. I will have one at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, do we usually, since, well, I don't think anybody on the council was here 14 years ago. So do we usually have some of our city partners, like other cities, come in and address us during this time or?
Well, they have the opportunity to do that. That's why we have a public comment. And that's also why we have a public hearing. Kit has suggested that we delay that public hearing. We re-advertise it to make sure that we properly follow the statutory code. And we will have a public hearing on the, on the 19th if you agree with that. I think that's your recommendation at this point in time.
Right. And our second addresses right now, too.
Yeah, yeah. But so what is our procedure to notify some of these other cities that, that use our services? Just to advertise in the paper? Is that what you said or we?
That is what is statutorily required for the public hearing. Of course, our ordinances are also in the, in the, here out in the public also so they can just watch it or hear about it, read about it in the paper. But there is a specific requirement that we put an ad in the paper 10 days, at least 10 days before the actual public hearing. And as I have said in my memo to you, I think that should be on July 19th. But we're not there yet. We need to first get the public comment.
Well, do, do I not have the right to ask a question though? So?
Oh, you can ask any question you want, yeah.
Just
Absolutely. Sarah, we had published these in the paper originally. So they have been published in the paper once. We're going to do that again on the advice of Kit. Tim Nylander also contacted the mayors of the, of the cities and advised them of what the rate structure would be. We've heard some comments from them and we'll be happy to answer those questions at the time we have a public hearing.
That answers my question. That's what I wanted to know. If we just advertised in the paper and they had to catch it or, or what, what we did with that. Okay. Do we have any other questions for staff on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Susan, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public here with, that would like to address this? Okay.
Mayor, council?
Thank you for allowing us to address you.
So you will need to address us only. Don't talk to any staff members. Just address us.
Sure.
And you'll need to state your name and tell us your name and then you have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
I am Heath Cottle. I'm the mayor of West Fork.
Okay.
This did come as a surprise to us. So Tim reached out to me last, last week. So I've had about a week notice before this hit, which wasn't a lot for the proposed rates that, the increases that are coming to West Fork. We are a wholesale client to the city of Fayetteville. We signed a lease with the city of Fayetteville less than two years ago that stipulated rates and stipulated a 3% yearly increase. Okay. So before I get too deep into it, I want to give a little explanation. West Fork had its own sewer system that was obsolete. We, we needed to do something to, to treat our sewer.
Mayor, could you talk more into the microphone so people can hear you besides just people on this front?
So we worked with the state. The state helped us get funding for it. We've spent $10 million to bring our sewer line into the city of Fayetteville. With that, we have a healthy bond payment that we have to pay. And we're also paying healthy rates to the city of Fayetteville for that sewer line. So just to give you an idea, the minimum sewer bill in the city of West Fork currently is $47.74 a month. That's before any usage. That's before you turn on the dishwasher, the washing machine, $47. That's just for the sewer. Under the proposed rate increase, the minimum West Fork bill will be $68.22 a month. West Fork is made up predominantly of fixed income families. That, we are struggling right now to pay the bills. The city of West Fork has dipped into our savings three times this year just to pay the Fayetteville bill. We have also, we have also moved almost half a million dollars out of sales tax into our water and sewer fund just to pay these bills. Now, half a million dollars. West Fork is a $2 million budget city. We have $2 million in revenue a year. A quarter of our revenue is going into our water and sewer department just to stay afloat and we've dipped into savings three times. So I say all that to say, the Fayetteville sewer bill, the minimums will go up to $18 a month. West Fork residents will be paying $68 a month and we're two years into the contract. Now, you ready for this? I was coming here to, to plead with you to not raise those sewer rates, to reconsider what is proposed for the city of West Fork. After looking at the Black and Beach report, I'm here to ask for a decrease in rates. So when we signed our contract and, and we are essentially looking to nullify that contract with, with the changes that are proposed. But with that contract, I was under the understanding we were getting wholesale rates. And wholesale, that has a meaning. There's wholesale There's wholesale and there's retail. We are a pass-through customer. Fayetteville doesn't come into West Fork to service our sewer lines. They don't come into West Fork to add taps to our sewer. You're simply treating, treating the effluent. We're not getting any rate decreases for that. We're currently paying more than, than retail customers, whether it be Farmington, Fayetteville, Greenland. And I say all this, I'm here for West Fork. The city of Elkins is in the exact same situation we are. But you guys aren't doing meter readings in West Fork. You're simply, it's simply a pass-through. We are sending the sewer up here, we paid, we made the investment to get the lines here. We even, we even cost shared with the city of Fayetteville on, on an upsides of a line that, that the city needed to serve us as well as Greenland. So for those reasons, I'm asking for a rate decrease. On our, on our water service, you guys provide us water service as a wholesale customer, we have a 32% discount on our water service compared to the retail rates that the city of Fayetteville charges. I'm asking for that same 32% rate discount over, or under what your retail clients are paying. I disagree with Black and Beach on their, on their cost of service. I feel like they've assigned way too much to the city of West Fork in the fact that... So to give you an idea, we're, we are sending 92 million gallons of effluent to the city of Fayetteville. The city of Fayetteville is treating 5 billion gallons. That's less than 2%. That's what our volume is to the city of Fayetteville, less than 2%. Now, with that, if you, if you look at the sewer system as a whole, Black and Beach estimates that you have a 40% INI problem with the city of Fayetteville. INI is, is water coming in from the ground into the system. You're treating water that you're not getting paid for. At 40% INI? How much is that? That's 2.2 billion gallons being treated that's not being billed for. Now, that's none of my concern, that's your concern. I say that only to say that the budget shortfalls that you're asking for, they're regained in, in INI. But I also say that to say that th- this cost of service study looked at your revenue needs. It didn't look at any efficiency needs, it didn't look at any existing problems that need to be addressed. It simply looked at revenue needs and assigned that revenue to your various clients. And I feel that's very, that's very unfortunate for the city of West Fork, the citizens of West Fork. It, it is honestly crippling to our citizens right now just to make their monthly water and sewer bills. The, the water rates, I don't have an issue with. The city hasn't raised those rates in 14 years. The city of West Fork hasn't raised those rates in over a decade. We're right there with you. Water rates are cheap, and, and we are getting a wholesale discount on those water rates. I have no issue with that whatsoever. It, it is simply the sewer, and I just... We, we cannot, we will default on the city of Fayetteville, or the state, or somebody if, if these rate, if this rate structure goes into place. Are there any questions for me concerning that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the contract that you signed with the city of Fayetteville, what did you say, three years ago?
Under two years ago.
Under two years ago, okay. What did it say about any rate studies or changes to the charges that would, would be like West Fork?
So it does mention rate studies. As you can imagine, and I'm not taking shots, it was written by an attorney. And so the rate study portion of our contract and the rate portion of our contract are not very clear. And I'll give you an example of that. Fayetteville is entitled to a reasonable rate of return on its investment on assets employed to provide wastewater service to West Fork in the approximate amount of 2% above the average bond couponed outstanding debt at the time of the most recent comprehensive cost of service study. I'm an accountant, I have no idea what that means.
So I'm not a lawyer, but that sounds like it didn't lock you into a, a specific rate, that it allowed the, the study to prevail?
It certainly does provide mention that, that the city of Fayetteville would do rate studies. When we signed into this, we had no idea that it would be less than two years into the, the project. And I, I would also mention that Black and Beach, they point out that sewer growth in the city of West Fork is flat. They are not expecting any growth in the city of West Fork throughout this term, through 2026, while they are projecting 40,000 new accounts in the city of Fayetteville. The growth and, and the, the need for excess revenues is at home, right? The city of Fayetteville is not adding any additional needs or, or request, or demand on the system.
Thank you, I don't have any additional questions.
Kit and Paul, I think one of the things that, since, since Mayor Cottle has brought up this issue, I think, I'm not sure how big that contract is, how many pages it is, but I think it might be advantageous for us as a council to have a look at that since he's addressed specific items in, in the West Fork.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to provide that a copy to the city council. It, it is fairly long, just like most of these contracts. And it's a contract that we've had very similar to this with Elkins for decades. And so we basically were trying to treat both of our outside cities that were on a wholesale, as you would say, rate. We, we tried to treat them similarly, and so that's, and that was really the basis for a lot of the contract that was drafted for West Fork. And of course, they had their attorneys too, just like us. And, and so it was agreed to and adopted by both cities.
Okay, I understand that. But I'd still like to take a look at that, since we have, these questions have been, been brought up.
Vice Mayor, could I ask the attorney a question?
Yes, you may.
Would you agree that this is voiding this current contract, this, this rate proposal change? Would you agree that it's voiding the current contract?
That it's void?
Yeah, that it's essentially nullifying this contract.
Oh, no, I would not agree with that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, then, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. Do we have any other public comment? Do you?
I have another request. What I'm, what I know about this from whenever we connected to West Fork is really the total impact of West Fork on the operations in Fayetteville is a drop in the bucket, in my opinion. And so even if, what is a strain on them is not the equal amount of strain on the operations of our sewer plants as a whole. And so I think that, that I would like to kind of see that ratio to see what is the true amount of West Fork's impact on our system compared to the system as a whole. And I ask that because I think that it does seem like that they're getting a, a tough situation for a small town in a stagnant population growth. And when we did agree to hook up with West Fork, I think that there, there was an understanding that it was going to be to benefit of the citizens of West Fork to move forward. And I think we need to evaluate the benefit that they expected less than two years ago. It was hard for the West Fork citizens and the city council to get together the support to go ahead and do the right thing because they did have a failing sewer plant. And I think that Fayetteville can look at this as the total impact on our system. Are they getting a relative fairness, or, or is it a worse, a harder situation for them than it would be on a, on our municipality? Now, at the same time, it was our citizens that built the plant, that's the bonds, it's the vote, it's the responsibility of our city to serve our citizens the best we can. And it's, you know, when we have someone outside the city, then we do have to look at it. This is an enterprise fund, and so we have to operate our water and sewer and solid waste as a good company, as a good corporation, as an enterprise. It has to support itself. So I think that we look at the, the operations and the operational costs and what we need, and we try to be fair, especially with our smaller cities. And, and I guess I have a lot of compassion for West Fork, knowing the struggle it was just to get them to be able to do the infrastructure to participate and move into Fayetteville. And it was the right thing to protect the West Fork of the White River. There's more here than just the cost of the consumable. There's also the cost of what we're doing to protect impaired water in our, our, you know, our water that runs through our city. So, and into our drinking water in the Tiber Lake. So there's, there's some other impacts that I think that we can also consider. At the same time, they do need to pay, you know, whatever the enterprise impact is to run a good business and make a good business decision. And I don't have all those numbers. I've got to, you know, we had a lot of information whenever we looked at the impact of hooking them up, and it was really not a big burden on our system. We had plenty of capacity. We are not having to service their lines. It is a pass-through, so I, I don't know. I, I think that there's a lot to look at here as the total impact on a municipality that has been a customer, a customer of ours in an enterprise way for less than two years. And I, I, I understand the impact that this is going to have on a modest community that did the right thing to hook into a, a sewer plant that had the capacity to protect the West Fork of the White River, as well as offer the city an opportunity for a, a good wastewater system to protect the safety and health of their own citizens. So I hear you, is what I'm saying.
I, I have a bit of a comment. Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor, were you ready to?
I was just going to say, you know, thank you for that, Mark. I really, I believe I might have been on Water and Sewer Committee when we, when we first did this, and I'm, I'm remembering this, and I think it's, it's, you know, I think it's good that we, we look into this because it does seem, you know, we, we may not agree with the mayor, but we may, we need to look into it. I do know, like, for instance, because I'm from Elkins, I know that, I know what the fees are in Elkins. But there's a lot of growth in Elkins. There's a whole bunch of new houses being built out there. There's, I think there's supposed to be 200 or 300 new houses being built in Elkins alone in the past, in the next couple of years. So maybe a different situation for that city than West Fork. Sorry, Teresa, you go ahead.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mayor. I, I do think that we need to really kind of look into why you were not categorized as a wholesale sewer customer. So that would be something that maybe we need to look into and figure out. Maybe we made a mistake, maybe we have a different definition that needs to be modified, and just look into that a little bit deeper. So, believe me, we'll, we'll go forward with that. And, and I do want to commend the citizens of West Fork for hooking up to Fayetteville's wastewater treatment system. That has cleaned up the West Fork of the White River quite substantially, and will continue to do that for a long time. And so I, I really appreciate that, and we will, we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments? If, any member, any member of the public, please come up to the microphone, state your name, and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Jim Renfro. I'm from the city of Greenland, I'm a city councilman down there. What, we're a little different, smaller than West Fork, but we also have sewer upgrades we've been working on. We've spent quite a bit of our budget in maintaining and, and working with the same engineers you guys have to upgrade our lift stations and a lot of overlooked and outdated sewer. And so I guess the timing of this is probably the issue biggest for me because we've just passed several rate increases for, to fund the sewer rates and the increases on the residents that are fixed income primarily in Greenland. We haven't had any new businesses or new developments because of our sewage issue because we were operating at a, basically our, our maximum that the EPA recommended that we operated at. So we had to really save up and come up with the funds that we could and, and appropriate it towards increasing our, you know, updating our sewer system. And looked at what we could afford at the time based on the rates we thought we would have going forward and the increases on our public. And here we are just a, you know, less than a year after the first one, and a few months after our second increase, and, and looking at more increases. And so I'm, I'm concerned, a lot of people have reached out to me on the ones we've already implemented. I know it's going to be a lot more because we were a little bit like the mayor. West Fork caught off guard, you know, with this. And so, one, I would like better communication with those city leaders in the other cities that are going to have to manage the calls and the complaints and things like that because I know you understand that 100%. You guys get that just as we do. While we're a smaller community, smaller city, it's the same, same issues. And so we want to be good partners. We do have some services that West Fork doesn't have. You guys come down and read our meters, you help maintain, you know, the system. And we see your trucks down there, we appreciate the people. I'll go down and talk to them, tell them thank you for, for, you know, participating as a partner and keeping us going. But I'm really concerned. I am, full disclosure, I'm, I'm a mayoral candidate, I'm running for mayor later this year. So I think our current mayor said he probably wouldn't run. That's fine, we're working together with everyone, just figure out what the vision looks like for Greenland and our partners in West Fork, and, and hopefully everybody can get through this and, and stay whole. And we're very much a smaller impact on the larger city of Fayetteville, just like West Fork is because we have a smaller population. But we want to grow, we want to eventually have businesses. We've had people come say, I want to build a hotel off Interstate, or I want to build houses. And, and we can't do that until we fix our sewers. And we're, we're, we're there, we're getting there, we're more than halfway there. But I'm afraid just as we're coming on with these other, you know, sewer updates, we have this additional cost. And however we can partner with you guys, we'll do it. But just consider the smaller towns that are impacted. I think, you know, sir, you were right on point. We're, we're probably a smaller impact than what this study is looking at overall. But whatever we can do, we want to pay our fair share, but we want it to be fair, right? And we want to do whatever we can to, for those citizens like my mom that live in town and they're on social security and they're watching every dollar. With the inflation and the cost increases, it's really difficult right now. So, thank you, I don't want to take up any more of your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to address the council on this item? No one on Zoom?
No, ma'am. And could I say one quick thing about procedure for us for the next time? So we did have a staff presentation that ran over what Mayor Jordan would typically allow, and we kind of anticipated this, but felt like there was so much information to share. We ran over by about six minutes, and so if you all would like us to try to trim back to 10 for the next presentation, we can work on that. But as you heard, the information that was presented, that's about as much as we could cram into that period of time. So I just wanted to ask ahead of time so we don't have the issue about letting our staff go over.
I, I have no problem with letting them go over. I was kind of watching the time, and I thought, well, I've made so many mistakes tonight. Maybe I'm not right on this one either. I have no problem. I mean, I think it's kind of necessary, it's a big change. We haven't had this and haven't had a rate study in 14 years. So I think, I think it stands to reason it should go over a little bit more. Thank you.
And you certainly have, within your rules of order and procedure, the right for the city council to grant additional minutes. And you could at the, do that really at the start, not even wait for them to run out. Because this is a very important issue, and it's complex and complicated, and cannot just be done with slogans, so they've got to explain it. And so I think, I agree that we probably need additional time to help answer some of these questions that have been raised by everybody.
I don't, I don't think any, I, I see the council members here kind of nodding their heads. I don't think anyone will have a, a problem with that. If we could maybe do 15, 16 minutes, that'd be fine, so, thank you. Okay.
If I may, Madam Vice Mayor, it, it appears to me, though, that there would be a benefit to this council if there was opportunity for a meeting prior to July the 9th. a benefit to this council if there was opportunity for a meeting prior to July the 19th, so that additional questions could be asked without our elected body being present, so that it could be a business discussion with business partners that participate in both our sewer treatment facilities, as well as our water facilities, that we don't need to necessarily be participants in, so that they have the benefit perhaps of an additional presentation or question asking and answering on the rate study. Because I, I'm not interested in Fayetteville subsidizing other customers, but I do want to ensure that the perception of fairness and having the opportunity to clearly understand what the study revealed, I think would benefit us. And so while I don't have the authority to ask for it, I would certainly encourage us, whether it's with a mayor, an elected representative, their business operations manager, someone who represents, um, Elkins or Greenland or, uh, West Fork. It, it would behoove us, I think, to give them that opportunity outside of this meeting to be able to have dialogue. There's, um, there's a lot of numbers. I actually read the Dadgum report and I may have needed to refresh myself along the way. And so, um, there could be some inadvertent errors. And, uh, I thought I caught several and each time I was wrong. But I think others, because of the impact, deserve the right to satisfy themselves that there are no calculation errors or misunderstandings on the premises of the study. So I would want to encourage that kind of meeting. Then if someone doesn't avail themselves of that meeting, it's on them. It's probably true that we could have sent a flare up and said, we're starting this study. The study's been going on a year and a half. You know, hey, we're six months away from the study being delivered. Let's go ahead and have a preliminary kind of review. We want to be a good neighbor. And so I, if that meeting can take place, I would certainly be appreciative. Thank you.
All right then. Uh, any other comments? Anything else? Okay. So this is an item that, uh, that we've been requested to possibly, um, table it?
Yes, we, uh, we can't make any decision, you can't make any decision until after the official public hearing, which really shouldn't be scheduled before July 19th because it'd have to get it into the paper and more than 10 days before the notice. So tonight I would like, uh, the city council to, uh, first say July 19th, that the city council meeting is the right date and time for the public hearing. And secondly, that you would table, uh, this item until then. Uh, I do agree with Councilman Whitaker. It's up to the staff, but I think probably staff ought to get with representatives from at least, uh, West Fork and, and Elkins that have our two wholesale customers, uh, to try to answer their questions. I know they've, I think, talked to the Water and Sewer Committee already, but I think that, uh, staff can do that in the interim. And then we are going to have, of course, a public hearing and then we'll have the ordinance even after that on the 17th. So it'll be a lot of times for more public hearing, but I do agree that probably staff ought to do some work with their representatives in the interim to see if some of these issues can be better explained and better understood. But I would like a motion to table.
Okay. So Kit, did, did I hear you say that we need to, do we also need to vote that, uh, 7/19 is the right time for the hearing? Or do we just need to table it and say that?
Okay. I think you can do it in one, one motion. You can move to schedule the hearing, uh, at, at July 19th, the next city council meeting and table, uh, this, this item until then.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we, uh, place this on the table until July 19th. And July 19th would be the date of the public hearing.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second to table this, uh, to July 19th. And that will be the date of the public hearing. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunge?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Ertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Okay then, so July 19th. All right. Our next item. Our next item of new business is an ordinance to rezone that property described in rezoning petition RZN. I'm gonna wait just a minute here. Get out of here. Okay. Okay. Our next item of new, of new business is an ordinance to rezone that property described in rezoning petition RZN 22 dash 021 located at 248 South Happy Hollow Road in Ward One for approximately 3.1 acres from RSF four residential single family, four units per acre to NC Neighborhood Conservation. Do you have that, Jonathan?
I do, Vice Mayor. Mr. Williams will need to read the ordinance first.
Oh, sorry. I'm.
Okay, I'm ready to read. Here we go.
I'm not.
No problem. Be it ordained by the city council or the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council or the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the property shown on the map, exhibit A, and the legal description, exhibit B, both attached to the planning department's agenda memo from RSF four residential single family, four units per acre to NC Neighborhood Conservation. And section two, that the city council or the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in section one.
Okay, Jonathan, you're on now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, this property is in East Fayetteville. It's within Ward One on the eastern slope of, uh, Mount Sequoia. It's about halfway between Sequoia Woods, uh, the parkland for Sequoia Woods, the north, and then Huntsville Road to the south on the east side of Happy Hollow, as you can see in the aerial image here. Uh, the property is largely undeveloped. There is a single family house, uh, near Happy Hollow Road. And the property as a whole is a mix of, uh, open areas with tree canopy, uh, with the majority of that tree canopy being on the, the eastern quarter or third of the property, which also is incidentally the more sloped piece of the site, although no part of the property is designated, uh, as our hillside hilltop overlay district. Uh, the request before council tonight is to rezone the property from RSF four residential single family, four units per acre to NC Neighborhood Conservation. Uh, from a land use standpoint, uh, staff finds the request to be compatible, uh, with the surrounding area. Uh, it's a, uh, not a wide mixture of uses. Uh, it's a pretty narrow mixture, but it is almost all single family homes and two family homes. Uh, there is a bit more of a mix of, of zoning districts, as you can see in the zoning map here, uh, to the south and southwest is, uh, all zone RSF four, similar to the property today. Uh, to the northwest is the Treetop subdivision, which is a mixture of RSF eight and NC. And to the northeast is a, uh, residential planned zoning district, uh, which includes a mixture of two family and single family homes. Uh, all told, uh, the, the zoning allowances for all those properties is a mixture of single family and two family homes, uh, which staff finds to align with the single family allowance, uh, within the Neighborhood Conservation zoning district. In, uh, looking at it through a long range planning lens, uh, staff similarly finds the request to be consistent, uh, with, with, uh, our future land use map, which calls out the area as a residential neighborhood area. Uh, this is meant to encourage a, a mixture of residential uses. And, and while Neighborhood Services, uh, does only allow for single family zoning, uh, like much of the, the wider area, uh, the limited infill score suggests to staff that, uh, only an incremental change is appropriate here, whereas something more intense or, or dense, uh, may not be appropriate on the property. Uh, when looking at the other issues that relate to the site, uh, I did mention topography because it bears, uh, noting, uh, given it is on the east slope of Sequoia. Again, it's not in the HHOD, uh, but it is kind of a bifurcated site. Uh, it's got a cross slope that runs from northeast to, or excuse me, northwest to southeast of, of about 5%, fairly nominal, near Happy Hollow, uh, before dropping off a little bit more steeply, uh, to the east, uh, running about 11 or 12% for the back, again, third or so of the property. Uh, in terms of future connectivity, uh, this was a, an item that staff considered significantly and was a, a point of discussion at the planning commission. Initially, or as it, uh, immediately appears, the property only does have access to Happy Hollow Road, which is only a partially improved road. Um, the, uh, which is a, was a source of concern for, for some planning commissioners to, to increase the, the potential density on this property or the, the number of houses allowed on this property from about 10 to about 30 theoretically. Uh, they felt it would be, some felt it'd be more appropriate to have access for more streets, uh, especially with development already to the north and east that limited potential opportunities. Uh, staff, uh, did consider that, but ultimately fell and I'm feeling it was appropriate from a connectivity standpoint, since Happy Hollow immediately connects to the wider street network, uh, including through the Cliffs Apartments out the crossover and further south to Huntsville Road. Uh, feeding into that consideration of infrastructure, uh, is that the property does not have immediate access to sanitary sewer, uh, while it is, uh, nearby and could readily be extended. Uh, it's not right there right now. Um, so it is certainly a consideration. Uh, it is within 200 feet though, which is generally considered an, an acceptable or a reasonable distance for, uh, developer to extend. Uh, and given it does kind of, um, work into the conversation we had at the last council meeting about cost shares, uh, this generally falls outside the, the typical policy area for cost shares to initially be, uh, supported by staff. That, that usually falls within the, the city's original plat, which doesn't quite extend over Sequoia. Doesn't mean it wouldn't be eligible for a cost share, but it wouldn't be a priority cost share compared to those areas that are closer to the urban core. Just to kind of put it in that perspective and that conversation, since it's fresh on a lot of people's minds. Uh, lastly, uh, we did receive some public comment at the planning commission meeting. Uh, there is a neighbor who was, uh, opposed to the request, uh, they had concerns in particular about traffic and congestion, uh, as well as drainage in the area. Um, they, they also took issue with the name of the request for Neighborhood Conservation. They felt that, uh, allowing this increased density, uh, which is 10 units per acre, whereas RSF four only allows four units per acre, is not inherently conserving, uh, the, the neighborhood in their eyes. Uh, conversely, we did receive some public comment, uh, more recently, uh, this morning, specifically from another resident who wasn't supportive of the request. I believe the council was blind copied on it because of, but because of the nature of blind copying, I'm not certain. Uh, so to summarize their, their feedback about the request, uh, it was generally, it was supportive, uh, with comments about the proximity of Happy Hollow School to the east. Uh, there's a transit stop about 500 feet to the south, uh, for ORT. Uh, they also noted, uh, that there is future sidewalk construction, uh, intended along Happy Hollow Road. Uh, some on council may recall, there was a, a somewhat contentious rezoning further to the southwest and, and, and happy conclusion of that rezoning's, uh, approval was that a, a sidewalk connection is now intended to be made, uh, from Huntsville to the south all the way up to Sequoia Woods to the north. Um, otherwise, in addition, there's also a conversation about traffic calming alongside, uh, those sidewalk improvements. Uh, all that said, uh, this is not the first time this item has been requested, albeit it is the first one that has made it to council. Uh, original request on the property was to rezone it to RIU, Residential Intermediate Urban. Uh, staff felt like that was not an incremental increase, uh, with RIU's unlimited density allowance and, and permission for single, two, three and four family dwellings. Uh, we felt as though it was too much, uh, for Happy Hollow Road and the location and recommended denial. Uh, the commission felt similarly and denied the request. It was not appealed to council. Uh, again, what is before you all tonight is RS, a request to rezone to NC Neighborhood Conservation. Uh, staff did feel, again, that this was compatible and consistent with our, our plans and the existing land uses, and so we recommend approval. Uh, the commission had a split opinion on it. There was one recusal and of the remaining six commissioners, uh, was a vote of four to two. Uh, those in favor felt similarly to staff, that the overall area connectivity was adequate. The two dissenting votes felt that it was not adequate. Um, the dissenting voters also felt that, that lack of connectivity conflicted with, uh, the city goal to create compact, complete and connected neighborhoods, uh, given it would have access only to Happy Hollow Road. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions, uh, the council has. And I believe Robert Rhodes is here in person as the applicant for the item. Thank you.
Do, do any council members have any questions for Jonathan before we go to the applicant?
I have a quick, uh, question. Uh, I think this might be a mistake or maybe it's a mistake in my understanding. So when you've got the infill, you have city plan 2040 infill matrix and the score ranges from four to six, but then you also say there's a weighted score of seven. It's on, um, page two of 14. I just wanted to clarify if you meant five or, um, why it would be seven.
I believe, uh, are you referring to the council's report or the planning commission's report? It, it's an interesting distinction when the planning, when city plan 2040 was adopted, the planning commission, uh, had recommended that there be a weighted infill matrix score as a part of that. They felt some things justified more consideration, like a, a good street grid, as opposed to water and sewer, which it's easy to find water and sewer in a city of our size. It may not be as easy to find a good grid. Um, so we do include that weighted score that the planning commission, uh, had drafted for themselves in the planning commissioner report, but that we typically remove that from the city council report, uh, given it was not formally adopted as a part of city plan 2040. And I'm not seeing it in my copy, but I apologize if it did get into the council.
It's in the planning commission report. So that's helpful. Thank you, Jonathan.
Sure.
Thank you, Teresa. Uh, any other questions for Jonathan? Okay. Is applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Robert Rhodes and I'm with the law firm of Hall Estel and I am representing the applicant. This is another situation of a property owner, petitioner here, listening to the city and to the planning commission for that matter, making appropriate changes. As you heard earlier, almost a year ago, this matter was brought forth, uh, requesting it to be rezoned, um, RIU. After it was denied, turned down, the petitioner listened and now comes before you with a compatible request, that is Neighborhood Conservation. And we would ask you to approve this and if possible, approve it on three readings tonight, based on the fact that our, our first go at this, after we purchased the property was, you know, 11 months ago. And, um, I think we all would agree that, uh, the need for housing in this community is, um, is a pretty strong need. The density of RSF four for this property, um, as you know, would be about 12 lots. As, uh, Mr. Kerr said, uh, with this, uh, with the NC, it would be about 30. However, I think, um, you all realize that, um, you cannot get 31 lots on a 3.1 acre plat, especially where there's tree preservation, the contour of the gully, um, on the east side, the infrastructure. Although we do not have any plans yet, we believe this will probably end up to be about 16 to 20 lots. Regarding the gully, it will be part of the tree preservation area, which under RSF four would be 25. Under NC, it would be 20. I understand that's a bit of a difference. However, with that gully there and with the positive impact on the environment of leaving that gully and that area, um, in a, in a nice pristine manner, uh, we're hopeful that we could exceed 20% when it comes all said and done. Now, obviously, we haven't, we haven't given you a plan. Um, we, 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 we are just hopeful that that will be the case. The future land use plan for 2040, as you know, um, as Jonathan said, is residential neighborhood, um, for this area or a mix of housing, which is what the current surrounding neighborhoods are, a mixing of housing. So I hope you will agree with your planning commission as well as your staff report and find that this zoning request is compatible for the future. Now, in regard to the current compatibility, again, it's got that mixed density around the site with higher density to the northwest, duplexes to the northeast. Uh, yes, there's some undeveloped lands around there. However, staff and the majority of the planning commission still found this incremental increase in density under the NC designation compatible. Again, that is what you all are tasked with, looking at a rezoning request. So it's compatible now and it will be compatible in the future. This as, as we've just discussed, and as, as Ms. Turk brought up, this has a medium infill score, but to highlight the positives on this site, it's directly served by Ozark Regional Transportation. The trailhead is within 800 feet. Water and sewer connections will be at the developer's expense. And I think if you'll read that email that Jonathan discussed, you'll see that, um, it is very supportive. And this is from a neighbor that's, uh, lives a half mile away. It's, uh, one of the Quorum Court members. I think she made some good points. One of them was in regard to the fact that it's close to Happy Hollow School, close to the bus line. And so with the housing shortage that all of Northwest Arkansas and Fayetteville is facing, there's a potential, this is potential housing that is accessible to public transportation and schools, allowing one to cut down on car trips. Plus, as Plus, as she mentioned in her email, there is going to be connectivity with the sidewalks and with with the plans for the streets. With all that said, on behalf of the petitioner, I humbly request that you pass this rezoning into the neighborhood conservation. And in light of the public comment and the responses and answers that we've given as far as some of the comment, I would hope that you would be able to accelerate this to a third reading and pass it tonight and help us get some homes built sooner rather than later. I stand ready to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rhodes?
I have one, Vice Mayor. And that is, the city attorney will remind me, I'm not allowed to ask you about uses, but two of the emails in support of your rezoning request were enthusiastic about the potential for the addition of some commercial or service uses beyond simply residential. So my question to you is only, is there enthusiasm anticipatory and yet misguided? Or would you envision there being some potential for your client to want other than simple homes?
I think the direct answer is that the plans have not been made, they truly have not been made, and the the client, the developer knows he has the option to, you know, to put something there, but has not decided that yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Robert. So is there any member of the public that would like to address this item? Anybody on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. What are your wishes on this?
I had planned to get out there this week to go take a look at Happy Hollow Road, and I did not get there to just take a look at that road. I I have some concerns about that, about the volume of traffic that potentially could be increased from this change in zoning. So I, I mean, I'm just, we could have a tour, or I could just try and go next week, but it's certainly, I would, I would like to not pass the final vote tonight if possible.
Jonathan, can you put up on the screen the the map of the street and possibly, you know, kind of just show us what, you can refer to that, Teresa, and show us what your concerns are?
And also, were that new sidewalk is going? That would be very helpful.
Is this the image you were looking for, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And the sidewalk, as it's intended, would run along the west side of the road. You can see where the treetop subdivision to the northwest has completed a portion of it, and there's also broken segments or disconnected segments further to the south that are intended to make that connection so that you could get from Huntsville all the way north to Sequoia Woods. And also further to the south, which is off this map, is, I believe it's Fourth Street, which is an east to west street, which does have sidewalk at the back of curb, which, if connected, would create a theoretical network that could get people from this property to the school.
So that would, so just to clarify, that that would, that would be connected, and so that would be a way that children could go to school, connect up. Okay. Thank, and when do we anticipate the sidewalk being completed?
I do not have that answer, but I can get it for you all.
Okay, thank you.
So Jonathan, I have a question. Happy Hollow, is it due for some traffic calming measures?
I believe there are some traffic calming measures installed further to the south. It's been a minute since I drove on it, so I'm trying to remember. I thought there was a speed table further south. I remember it was recently overlaid, and as a part of the sidewalk conversation and that rezoning conversation that occurred several months ago, there are discussions about incorporating traffic calming with the city's new traffic calming policies. One of the biggest components of that is making sure that there's consensus among the neighbors. We found, and you all have likely heard, that some traffic calming gets installed at the wishes of maybe one or two people when the larger neighborhood did not want it.
Yes.
So I'm not sure where that is in the process as well, but that's another item I can check up on and follow up with you all.
Yeah, I can't really remember. Holly, you're on Transportation Committee also. I know we talked about this. I don't remember where it was in the, in the procedure, though, and I know that the existing speed tables are not effective, and and we talked about how they, they've been ground down, I guess, or something over time. I don't know where we are. I was think, in the process, I think, I was thinking it was scheduled for traffic calming, though. But that might be something we need to check into, Teresa. It's been a while since.
I can check into that.
Okay, thank you.
If I recall correctly, some of that was the discussion about the rezoning, I think at Fifth Street, maybe it was at Fifth, four, five, six months ago, so.
This has been more recent than that, but, you know, I can't remember exactly if if we were starting that process or it was in, already in the works to to add. But what I believe we were discussing was adding more tables, more speed calming along the street that would kind of work in with the existing speed tables that were there. But anyway, we might check into that.
Vice Mayor, I believe possibly there might be somebody maybe from engineering that could address it, but I do believe it's four modular temporary speed cushions that are being installed to kind of test, and they can be moved. But maybe if Chris is here, he might be able to answer.
I didn't know if Chris was available or not.
He's not, unfortunately. He's out of town. We did just receive a note from one resident who was pleased with recent traffic calming measures that were installed on Happy Hollow, but then asked for continued consideration of some other items. But it was around Ray, and, but I'm not sure if this is directly related to, I'm sorry, Chris is not here, so I'm guessing.
Okay, that that's fine, that's fine. So what do, what does the council wish to do with this?
I feel like we have some outstanding issues that if we could hold this here until two, for two weeks, and come back and have some of these items resolved, or have a little bit more information, that it would give us more insight and direction on where this project stands, or this rezoning stands, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm okay to hold it as well.
So anyone else have anything to add to that?
Vice Mayor, I can confirm, it looks like it was on the May fourth Transportation Committee that it was discussed. There are two traffic tables, six hundred and fifty feet apart, and they, but I will follow up with engineering and have more of an update beyond that. I I think agenda session may be the appropriate place for that next week.
Okay, all right. So we want to hold it right here, or just, you want to table it, or what do you?
I think, I think just hold it until next week. I don't think we need to table it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think just hold it to the next meeting.
So just leave it on the first reading?
Just leave it on the first reading, then. Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. All righty, so. Let me see, I have to write one here. Okay, our next item is an ordinance to amend section one fifty-nine point zero one, fees of the Fayetteville Unified Development Code to clarify that homeless shelters are exempt from building permits.
Whereas on November fifth, two thousand nineteen, the city council passed ordinance sixty-two fifty-five to amend section one fifty-nine oh one B ten F double I of the Unified Development Code to clarify that homeless shelters are exempt from building permit fees. And whereas on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the city council passed ordinance sixty-four forty-six, which amended various chapters in the Unified Development Code related to stormwater regulations, but the exhibit containing revisions to section one fifty-nine oh one inadvertently excluded the exemption for homeless shelters that had been approved in two thousand nineteen. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section one fifty-nine oh one B ten F double I and enact a new section one fifty-nine oh one B ten F double I for the purpose of exempting homeless shelters from paying building permit fees as follows. Quote, double I, affordable housing and homeless shelters, construction of single-family, nonprofit, multifamily supportive housing and homeless shelters funded wholly or primarily by the federal community development block grants, nonprofit service organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, housing and urban development housing loans, and similar programs designed to provide affordable, owner-occupied, single-family residents to low-income individuals, nonprofit, multifamily supportive housing, and homeless shelters shall be exempted from the payment of building permit fees. And I brought this forward just because it's a housekeeping measure, as you know, just inadvertently, it was, the homeless shelter part of this was was repealed, because I guess the, they didn't have the latest version of this particular code section when they decided to make changes in another part of the section. And so this is just to put the homeless shelters exemption back in place as the city council put in in two thousand nineteen. So this is just to correct that mistake.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for Kit? Anybody on Zoom that would like to address this? Anybody in the council chambers that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I bring it back to our council. What would you like to do on this?
I move we suspend the rules and go to this next second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is an ordinance, does it get three readings also?
It will need three.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have motion and a second to go to the second reading. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Ertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
And ordinance to amend section one fifty-nine oh one fees of the Fayetteville Unified Development Code to clarify that homeless shelters are exempt from building permit fees.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Ertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
And, and ordinance to amend section one fifty-nine oh one fees of the Fayetteville Unified Development Code to clarify that homeless shelters are exempt from building permit fees.
Okay. Any questions or answers before we go on to this last vote? Okay, Kara, please call the roll.
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Ertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, our next item is an ordinance to amend section one seventy-seven point zero five street tree planting standards of the Unified Development Code to require the planting of a street tree on every street frontage and residential subdivisions. And is it Melissa that has, oh, Kit has this, okay.
Whereas section one seventy-seven oh five street tree, street tree planting standards of the Unified Development Code requires the planting of one street tree per lot, which has led to gaps in subdivisions with corner lots and lots with multiple frontages. And whereas proposed code amendment to require one street tree to be planted per street frontage will benefit new neighborhoods and create a balanced tree-lined streets to make a better streetscape, and is recommended for approval by the city's urban foresters, urban forestry advisory board, and the planning commission. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend section one seventy-seven oh five B one A by repealing it in its entirety and enacting replacement A as follows, quote, A, street trees shall be planted, one tree per lot, with lots with multiple street frontages shall be planted at one tree per street frontage.
Okay, now it's Melissa, okay.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, I'm Melissa Evans, one of the city urban foresters in the planning division, and we are recommending a change for our street tree planting standards. This would be a code amendment to address the gap in our street tree ordinance that allows lots with multiple street frontages to only plant one street tree overall. Next slide, please. You can see an example of Sloane Brook subdivision here, and we've seen this as time goes on with more subdivisions being built, the streets that are highlighted in purple do not have street trees, and that is because a lot of them have corner lots. You can see in that blown up diagram, the yellow highlighted dots are the street trees. They're often planted in front of the house, you know, along with the driveway. So if there is a side street for the corner lot, there's not an additional tree planted along that side street. And so for this example, sixteen additional trees would have, had to be planted for this subdivision. Next slide, please. So we propose to amend our street planting standards to require one street tree per street frontage. Next slide. And the recommendation, staff and planning commission recommend approval of the amendment. As far as public comment goes, our urban forestry advisory board heard and discussed this item, and that is a public meeting. We have also reached out to different engineers and developers who work in our city often. We received one comment from those folks, just saying probably developers won't be real happy about it, but overall, they thought it was a good change. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So Melissa, how many, exactly, if developers are unhappy about this, how many trees would they be required to plant on a, on a corner lot?
Well, and that was one comment from one person. Again, we didn't get many comments from those that we sent this information to. But they would be, so for corner lots, and and this is for new proposed subdivisions only, they would be required to plant, you know, two trees, so one tree for each street frontage on those corner lots. If you have a lot that's just, has one street frontage, you still just plant one tree per lot.
Okay.
So Sloane Brook's a pretty large subdivision, and that would have required sixteen extra trees. It's, it's not as many trees as our, or, you know, it's not like double the amount of trees that they would have to plant, it's just for those corner lots.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do any members of the council have any questions for staff on this? I personally don't know anybody I've ever shown a house to that did not want a, at least two trees in their yard if they were on a corner lot. I mean, I think that's something that's pretty standard that people, when they move to Fayetteville, they do, you know, they do like trees, and they want to know that there's, you know, like to see them planted in the new subdivision, so I have no issues with this. So no, no questions? Okay, do we have any, anybody on Zoom that would like to discuss this? Okay, anybody in the, in the council chambers that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council members. What, what would you like to do with this?
I move that we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Kara, would you please call the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Ertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
And ordinance to amend section one seventy-seven oh five street tree planting standards of the Unified Development Code to require the planting of a street tree on every street frontage and residential subdivisions.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Kara, please call the roll.
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Ertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
And ordinance to amend section And ordinance amend Section 17705, Street Tree Planting Standards of the Unified Development Code to require the planting of a street tree on every street frontage in residential subdivisions.
Okay. Do we have any other, uh, questions before we go on?
Vice Mayor, I just have a comment. I did say this during, uh, the agenda session, but I want to go ahead and say it now, I just want to commend the staff and everyone who worked on this, that we were adding this and taking care of this gap. It's very incredibly important for our air quality, stormwater management, um, and just, uh, the price of, of utilities when we have a tree in the front, you know, that can help with, with bills. So I just want to, um, thank everybody who worked on this, and, um, always want to support , uh, poor trees. Thank you. They're the lungs of our city.
Okay. Thank you, Sonya. Anything else? Okay. Kara, would you please call the, uh, the roll?
Bunch?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes.
Hertzberg?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Whittaker?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, looks like that may be our last item of business. Do we have any announcements before we, we close? Okay. Oh, Teresa?
I have one, just one final comment. I just want to commend everybody that, um, put together the pride parade, and the trans parade, and all the city staff, and everybody else that went into making that such a successful and joyful event last Saturday. So thank you all. It was one of the best things about Fayetteville. There's many things about Fayetteville, but it was a great, outstanding event. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you very much.